All right, I think we're ready to get started. I'd like to bring to order the special meeting to discuss the review of design, the draft design manual, Chapter Three. And there's, I think, process-wise, what I'd really like to do is have people ask specific questions about Chapter Three. And once we get through the questions, then we'll provide some opportunity for the public to make comment, if there are members of the public, it looks like there are. And then we'll go back and we may have some time to talk about just our thoughts overall on where we're going and how this is going. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So let's get started.
So I was just going to be annoying. And just remind you of the meeting schedule. Let's see, where am I? Oh, here we go. So we have tonight, and we have next week if we need it. Just so you know the overall structure. Last night, they, so we can't get enough of this. So we were at council talking about this for several hours last night.
You love Lucy.
And then, early in August, we'll consolidate all the comments and start working with Crandall or Rambula to develop the final draft, which will then go through a fairly standard format of PPC, and then on to councils with the PPC hearing in August, August 31st. We hope that some of the commissioners will come to that PPC hearing. We know that in the past, it's been really helpful for them to hear from you, and especially because this is your tool. I think it'll be a good opportunity to help them understand how this tool, how you see this tool working. And, you know, staff is certainly happy to explain that, but I think it may mean more coming from the commission. Anyway, the goal is to have this adopted in October. Okay. I've got the draft here in case we have edits that we want to write up, but we are open to the general comments and the specifics. And that would be my comment and message.
All right, let's open up the board and see who has comments, questions.
We're just doing questions now.
Just doing questions now.
I have a general question on page 71 of 93. The harmony, the inappropriate paragraph. I know we talk a lot about prescriptive versus kind of there's some gray area. So who has like the final call on, you know, if a developer comes in with a design that is somewhere in that realm, who has a final call to say, no, that's not appropriate for our community?
Well, in Central Issaquah, interpretations lie with the director. And then they could be appealed. I think that your, the inappropriate list here is our good performance standards in terms of it tells you what you don't want it to do, but without an image and without more, maybe some more specifics. I think I understand your question, you know, just how do we get better clarity about that? So I think we would agree that that language needs to be fine-tuned so it's clear what "look at me" architecture means.
So can I offer another answer, too? So for permits that come to the Development Commission as the decision body, you guys are the final decision. So if you guys ultimately decide it doesn't meet the intent of the guidelines, then that's the decision. Now, as Lucy mentioned, the applicant, if they disagree with that, they can appeal that to the city's hearing examiner, and then we have another conversation about who's right, right? But not all permits come to the Development Commission. Some are administrative, and in that case, the staff will be using this tool, and we will then be the final decision-maker, again, unless it's appealed, and then ultimately that goes to the hearing examiner for resolution.
Thank you. A general question, yeah? With the exception of the natural context and the usable open space sections, is the rest of this chapter pretty specific to the urban core style zone, or does this apply to all of Central Issaquah? Page 60 says it does apply to all of Central Issaquah. And I'm thinking especially about the things like block size and so on. Is our assumption that that would apply to east end of Gilman as well as right in the middle of the urban core?
Yes.
Can you maybe explain this block size? I'm not sure I understand how that was arrived at. Is it just based on what's there already? Or, I mean, we're not going to tear buildings down and now start building blocks to those dimensions, or are we?
Well, I think as prop, so we have certain streets that are in place, and then we have the properties in between. We, so I'm thinking about this from both directions that you've asked this question. Just from a planning perspective, there's a lot of research about block size. Portland has a, like a 200-square-foot block, I mean, 200 feet on a side. Seattle has a slightly larger block. It's probably more like 220 by 250. And there's some square blocks and some rectangular blocks. It switches around Westlake. So I think that their block sizes are based on that sort of standard length. There's a lot, there's a lot of research around why you want frequent streets from a pedestrian perspective, from an economic perspective. So in terms of how you implement that, as, even if you look at Central Issaquah now, and I can pull up that map, there is a grid that, a kind of conceptual grid that is overlaid. And so there are absolutely blocks that when they redevelop, we would expect a street to be built to further subdivide the sort of superblocks that exist into smaller blocks.
Okay, I guess. Would that apply to... This sounds like a wonderful thing to do if you're opening an old field and starting your own town, but you've got an existing system already. And I'm not sure how you get to that standard block size with existing, you know, if you're going to say, we're going to redevelop two blocks or, you know, between two streets, and then make a developer put in an extra street, I guess that's an extra street. I guess it's okay. It just seemed to me that I didn't understand the basis since blocks are already established.
Well, right. So if you look, I'm not sure that Crandall or Rambula would agree with exactly this map, so, but I'm just using it for discussion purposes. But if you look at this, you can see, for instance, in Pickering, down near the Town and Country, even continuing into the Commons, they're showing a street grid that is subdividing those blocks. Sometimes where you have streets like Gilman and Maple, and Mall and Maple, that are already at a good spacing, what you're adding is further north-south streets to shorten it because between SR 900 and 12, there are no streets, and that's like 1,200 or 1,400 feet long. And so we're anticipating that there would probably be two more streets that would be built in there. And, but you are highlighting, Carl, the challenge, which is that what if it's only half of the block that is being, you know, it's the south side of the block where that street's supposed to go through. And that's part of our negotiation and part of what we come and talk about, you know, with a larger project with the commission. This is how we're thinking about doing this incrementally.
And would it apply to the Rowley Development Agreement property?
So that block size does not because they have their own development agreement, but they have, they have agreed to put those same streets in.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, they, this grid has some reflection of their street system, but if you look at their development agreement, they have shown those same, two extra streets being built.
Right.
So, but, you know, to give you guys an example of how this is playing out in real world, so the street that's the north-south one, just north of Tibbetts Park, right where the hand is, so right now, we've been talking with the developer about doing a transit-oriented development right next to the Park and Ride Garage where the CenturyLink maintenance yard is. So if you go out there and look, there's no street north-south in between where CenturyLink is and where Cascade Business Park is. Well, plan shows a street going in there, so as we've been talking to the developer about that site, they are planning to build enough of a street to accommodate two-way traffic. It won't be a full-street section, but what we call half-street improvements, which is two travel lanes and then the sidewalk on their side, that will go in with that project, assuming it moves all the way forward. So part of it is you set the framework so that when these development applications come in, you know what you're trying to get to. Now, there may be cases where it just doesn't work, right? And we realize that. But without having a roadmap, you don't know what to ask for. So part of it is, you know, and I think part of the conversation is, is this map right? Or is what Crandall or Rambula doing, you know, which is actually a little bit of a finer-grain block size, you know, is that the right, the right size? You know, because that sets the expectations for the conversations we'll have with developers as they come through.
And would our, what's shown that we would be putting in or have put in, would that fit with the 240-foot?
Pretty much, because I think so. I haven't gone back to measure this, but the, in Central Issaquah, you know, we require the through-block passage every 250 to 300 feet, depending on what's kind of what's generating it. So Crandall or Rambula is recommending some different tools. You know, we would have looked for a street that follows this grid that's shown, and if your block is longer than 300 feet, every 250, at maximum 250 feet, you have to have a through-block passage, which is a, you know, 10-foot-wide walkway with, I don't know, 10 feet on either side or 5 feet on either side. They're looking at something that's more substantial as their through-block passage. You know, it's, I, again, we sent them a lot of edits, and I haven't had time to compare their document to the edits. But, you know, that was one of our questions, is, is it 40 feet or 60 feet, and how do we know which one? And is, you know, what's the genesis of that? But I think what, you know, they're talking about is almost like a street going through either the mixed mode or the pedestrian-bike-only.
Mr. Chair. So Lucy, on page 76, the block access through-block passages, pedestrian and bike only, on, under the appropriate points there, I think that's a great idea. The question that I have is, who's going to maintain that? There's maintenance of the walks, the landscape, all that. Is there a thought there, is that the tenants or the owner, individual owner, that's going to maintain it, or is the city going to maintain that?
My expectation is that they're privately maintained, but I don't think we've discussed that yet. So, I mean, I think that's a good question to make sure it's clear in the document.
Yeah, or is it an association that all the folks living in that walkway, that area, have an association, they pay into it and do the maintenance?
Right.
Also, under inappropriate items there, it talks about inappropriate storage area and storage rooms and trash enclosure shall not be fronting the passage there. So the thought is that where would the tenants or the occupants of those units, where would they put their trash? I'm assuming it's maybe merchants or probably...
Probably in an alley or underground parking, right?
Well, that, those are, so those are great choices. Alley's are the best because they're meant to be serviced, they're not meant to be pedestrian-oriented, and so they serve that really well. And they're, and a garbage truck can easily access that. Underground is very common because a lot of these kinds of buildings have chutes, and so you put those in a central location and it comes down. The thing is, then, then what typically, the garbage truck typically can't go in there or won't go in there. And so what that means is that they have some kind of cart, and they're, use a sort of trolley system, and they pull them out. That means we have to have a staging location. But I think that, I think, I would agree with what they're saying is, the staging wouldn't be in the through-block passage since that's so pedestrian and such a sort of gathering spot.
I have one.
Thank you.
I didn't see anything specifically about streets and sidewalks, like lane widths, curb radius, sidewalks, tree periodicity and so on. Is that out of scope because that's public, or should that be part of this document?
So, central, so essential, the Central Issaquah standards will still exist. So if we look at, so this chapter, Chapter Six, has street standards with lane widths and sidewalk widths and planting widths and frequency of trees. Now, there, so you know, there's six moratorium items, and one of the other moratorium items is vertical mixed use, which is the idea of having retail uses on the ground floor and either office or residential above. Crandall or Rambula has a separate contract, working on specific design standards and potentially locations for that. And they may make some recommendations that regarding wider, you know, specific widths of sidewalks. I don't think it's significantly different than what we have, but I think they want to ensure that there are certain widths there to support the kinds of retail, restaurant uses that you're likely to get in that ground floor area. So that may, we haven't decided, you know, if they want to make recommendations or set specific standards, you know, will that be another chapter in the design manual? Will that be another section of the Central Issaquah standards? We're still, we're waiting to get the content settled to figure out where some of these pieces will live.
Okay. Yeah, and so if this document is still used, could we have a reference somewhere in block access that would point to this and say that the standard for lane width and so on is in this document?
Well, if this, if this design manual is a chapter of Central Issaquah, then they've got all those pieces there together. So I, but the point that you're making is an important one, is just making sure that as we move these forward, making it clear how those pieces work together and that they are still linked.
Lucy, I have a question. On page 80 of 93, under building edges, under inappropriate, they say that more than one upper-floor setbacks that create the wedding cake appearances. Do you know why they think that's a bad thing, inappropriate?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I could speculate, but I, I, well, so I don't know from an aesthetic perspective. Here's the one thing I can say is from sort of, and Kevin may be, or Ray may be the best people to answer this, but, you know, structurally, it's complicated when you set a part of a building back because you've still got to carry that structure down. So it may be that there's just not, they don't see the value of having multiple setbacks. If you're setting back 20 feet, that may be sufficient to really, from the street perspective, create the perception of a four-story building, even though there are one, two, some number of other stories above that.
And maybe another speculation, because I don't know either, but I haven't, I've been told I have an opinion on everything. So what I've heard them say is, they want all of this to be very purposeful. So for example, if you're going to change materials on the building facade, it should be purposeful and not seem random, right? And so as you step back, and you typically do a step back for a number of reasons. One is you're trying to open up a view corridor, potentially, but you're also potentially trying to diminish the height of the building by creating that step back. And so maybe why they're suggesting not the wedding cake is because I don't think they see that that serves the same purpose, and it creates kind of multiple planes, which now you're trying to deal with from an architecture and a facade treatment. So I don't know that that's the answer, but I think that might have something to do with, you know, seeing two bigger planes stepping back as opposed to like a Legos is a better architecture approach. I don't know that it's necessarily an urban design thing, but it seems to be in this chapter, so we can ask that question.
Yeah, okay.
I also have a sense from that that they're really talking about creating a space of enclosure, right? An outdoor room, because people feel comfortable in that kind of space. And my sense was that multiple setbacks just open up that room and you don't have that space.
And I would agree that, you know, that's what we're trying to do, this, this, is open it up. So you got four-story and then you setback 20, but why not continue on? And to limit that under inappropriate, I think that's a probably a good point that we should maybe bring it up with the...
So these are great moments where if we're all scratching our head, we need some more clarity, right?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, on, Lucy, on page 79, under description...
Ray, could I just ask the commissioners, because we have two sets of page numbers on here?
Okay.
So either say 72 or, you know, 80 of 80, 93, so that I can make sure I'm looking at the same page you're actually referencing?
Okay. Page 79 of 93.
Okay, thank you.
Under description, this is the parking structure in lots. And I'm trying to understand, under description, it says, "In no instance should buildings be designed to promote an auto-orientation." I guess, you know, it's a building structure, and why do we have that statement?
Do they just mean that buildings should not be designed to promote an auto-orientation? Is that really what they're saying?
Yeah, but why? I mean, it's a, it's a parking structure. What's the...
So this is what they're, let me just pull it up so we're all looking at the images.
I mean, I can, I understand that we're not trying to promote, promote everybody from getting out of their cars and stuff like that, but this is a parking structure, and why do we...
I don't think this is a parking structure. This, the topic is parking structures and lots, but the gray, the gray, some of that, when they say parking structure, that may be the parking that's just at the ground floor, for instance, with another kind of use above. Or even if it is a parking structure that's solely devoted, while it's for the use of cars, we still want the parking structures to support and enhance the public realm for pedestrians. So if we were designing it for automobiles, we would put no screening on it. We would, we wouldn't care if it was a surface parking lot anywhere on the block. And I think what we're saying is that the way you design those things, you try, we need to have it functional for automobiles, but we're not trying to be oriented to automobiles. Does that make more sense?
Kind of like speaking from both sides of your mouth, you know, it's, it's a building, parking structure, but we don't want it to look like a parking structure. And by no means should we design to promote automotive orientation. Yet it's a parking structure.
I take they're talking about parking structures within buildings that have other uses in them.
Well, but even not. I mean, so let's take a couple examples. So one would be, let's take the example of a drive-thru, right? Drive-thru is very auto-oriented, right? Because it's for a car. You don't, most people don't walk up to a drive-thru. And so, so the question is, is where do you allow that drive-thru to be? If it's an auto-oriented design, you put that drive-thru out on the street. You want everybody to be able to get in and out as quickly as possible in their car. If it's pedestrian-oriented, you put that drive-thru on the backside of the building so that the street can still have an orientation to the sidewalk so that people feel comfortable walking into it, and you don't have to walk across a drive aisle, right, to get to the door. So that's, that's not a parking garage. But similarly with a parking garage, you know, if I wanted to design the most easy-access parking garage, I'd put a driveway on every, every street, right? I'd put, I'd make, put big signs that say, here's my parking garage, and I'd make it, as Lucy said, open so you can see it from anywhere. What, what we want to do with parking garages is we want to be purposeful for where those access points are so that they don't put a driveway on every street, because every time there's a driveway, there's an opportunity for a pedestrian and a vehicle to have a conflict point, right? So part of it is being thoughtful for where those driveways are. Part of it is putting the appropriate screening down at the street level so that when you walk past it, you're not just feeling like, I'm walking past a huge surface parking lot in a building, right? It's nice when the architecture actually has some plantings and some screenings and some other things, so as you walk past, you don't feel like, this is a dead zone and I just need to walk as fast as I can to get past this building. So I think, I think even though the function is car-oriented, I think the design of the building is trying to be more pedestrian-friendly and, you know, thinking about how it intersects with our desire to have a pedestrian and walkable downtown. You don't have to buy that. I might have just made it all up.
I'm just thinking, you know, if somebody was reading this, and it's a parking structure, yet we're telling the, the description is that we are not promoting auto-orientation. So why did we build the parking garage? Let's not build it, and then that, that takes care of it. So, but if we're going to build it, that's fine, then let's just say that, you know, try to limit the access to the structure, or, or screen it, or, I mean, there are a lot of screening and stuff like that on building edges and stuff like, and which I, I agree. It's just that I don't quite agree with that statement. It says, you know, we're building a parking structure, but by no means should it be, by no means are we promoting auto-orientation.
Well, Keith, Keith did a good job of summarizing it, though, when he said that what, what they were really trying to do is minimize, minimize the appearance, you know, make it look pedestrian-friendly. And so if you go down into the inappropriate, it says, inappropriate or multiple driveways, curb cuts, or access points along a single frontage, consider consolidation. And that, that's kind of what that sentence is saying.
Yeah, and so maybe we should change it to say something to the fact that, you know, disguise it so that it looks like a theater or looks like some neighborhood. It does not look like a auto-parking garage.
I've got a question on, on page 89 of 93. On the fabrics, so it's only canvas, no synthetic materials, and I don't know enough about awnings at all to know if most awnings are canvas or are there other, that's...
Glass, metal, so there's other choices. I mean...
Right. Canvas is, it is a material that you find. I mean, it's not the most durable, but it has a nice quality with light coming through it, blah, blah, blah. And then there, they also do mention, you know, the metal canopy. So you do see, I think glass is another good material. I mean, there's some downsides to glass because it needs to be cleaned so it doesn't look junky from above. But the vinyl tends to be the sort of inexpensive, big sign, kind of feels like it's been shrink-wrapped. And so I think that's probably what they're trying to move away from is...
Are there other synthetic materials besides vinyl, though, that are...
Stuff they use on ships.
What's that?
Hercules is the stuff that they use on ships. It's not canvas, but it's not vinyl, but it's a synthetic material, lasts a long time, holds up to sunlight, all the things that are bad, it protects against. And I don't, I had the same question, because it seemed canvas isn't very long-lasting. Not to mention the fact that... Not to mention the fact that in this environment, canvas is organic and has mold and all that other stuff grows on it, and some of the synthetics don't do that.
Right, and also there's a couple of different purposes for canopies, and I think what you're highlighting, Carl, is an important distinction. Like canvas would probably be more for shade in the summer. Glass and metal is probably more of a wet weather protection. And so it would be helpful to understand some of that if they're thinking about that. It's not that you don't use canvas in wet weather situations, but you're right, those are some of the downsides. So that's a good question we'll follow up on.
And one of the comments from the council last night, which I thought was really good as it relates to weather protection, is somehow addressing how, where you do have weather protection, if the purpose is for all-weather, outdoor, pedestrian comfort, a lot of times, as you see from the top photo, what's underneath the canopy is tables and chairs. And so if you're walking, you're out from underneath the canopy. So it was a great comment. I'm not sure how you deal with it, because we want the tables and chairs on the sidewalk, but if they're under the canopy, then you're walking out in the unprotected area. So I thought it was a great point, and I think it's something we have to think about as we put a finer tune on this.
We generally require deeper canopies. The other thing about four feet is if it's, I think they let it go up to 12 feet in height, I'm doing this from memory. Four feet up, at 12 feet up in the air, doesn't provide much weather protection. So I think the other piece is to look at depths that, I mean, what we've done is looked at depths related to the height at which they're located and having a maximum height, because there's a point at which the canopy is really just an architectural feature, it's no longer weather protection. And so trying to figure out, you know, what is an appropriate range. So the four feet is another good question to follow up on, too.
I have a question on page 91 of 93. Under urban parks, where appropriate, accessible parks within three blocks of all residents. So they, the idea to set a standard that people develop property, they have to make sure they create parks in that. And then, and then the question, the other question is, would the city parks department have, want to have some kind of say in this in terms of how many parks they want to maintain?
The day I got this, I handed those pages to them. And I know they have some thoughts. I think they were happy to see these pages in there. I think they were interested in having some, you know, the parks that they picked to show in here are the crown jewels of the Pearl District in Portland. It's Jamison Square and Tanner Spring, and we would be very lucky to have that quality of park in our city. But those are full-block parks that serve a large district. So I think part of the question is minimum size, maximum size, frequency, you know, if we're trying to do something within three blocks, which would be great, you know, I mean, having something within a 10-minute walk, if you're going to be denser and more urban, is appropriate. But are those part of a project that are then shared by the community? Are those things that the city's providing? All good questions. I just don't, I think we just need to spend a little more time understanding, both with the Parks Department and Crandall or Rambla, how to sort of help set a framework that, and understand what they're suggesting and what we think we can do.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Lucy, getting back to the canopy, again, I guess I didn't, I don't think we want to limit the designer when they come in, you know, what can be provided and what not to be provided. And I read the inappropriate list here, oddly sized form. What does that mean? You know, and the other thing is oversized advertising for tenants. And I can see the example there, but is that what we really want? We don't want the commercial folks to have their signs up there? What happens if a guy comes in with a canopy that slopes towards the building? Is that an oddly sized form? You know, glass going back into the building, so slope towards the building, so the water gets into the building, and then there's a downspout on the side that goes down, instead of sloping away from the building where, you know, then that's where all the rain, the water drop line would be. So an applicant coming in with a canopy going the opposite direction, is that an oddly sized form that we don't allow? So I guess, you know, I think we need to be careful on what we put on that inappropriate list, and just let the architect have some creativity to design something, and yet it's still within our jurisdiction or rim that says, "No, this is not good. No, this is not what we mean," that kind of thing. So in my mind right now, I don't know what oddly sized form means.
So judging by the page, I would say that the blue awning at the bottom is considered an oddly sized form.
It's not sized, it's shaped, oddly shaped, and what the intent is in this urban design thing is to have a consistency and not have one thing stand out to draw attention away from everything else. That would be an oddly shaped form.
Yeah, odd may be your interpretation, that's an odd-looking canopy. To me, it's, no, it's not odd, it's okay. I mean, it's up for interpretations.
Absolutely.
And so by us putting this category into the inappropriate, I think we need to be careful to identify, make sure that this is what we want. I mean, I've seen, I'm sure everybody's seen canopy in buildings where it slopes towards the building. Is that an odd shape?
I actually think they make a provision for that here with horizontal metal canopies. And what that implies is that will, that will be that type of canopy. It would slope back.
Metal canopy.
And...
Of both.
I get your point. I guess I would ask, isn't that, isn't that our job to then interpret what's oddly shaped at the time it's presented to us, as long as we've outlined some performance standards?
But I, again, you know, thinking back as a designer coming in, when he looks at this, he says, "Wow, oddly shaped forms is inappropriate. I'm not going to design my, my, putting on a designer cap, I would say, wow, I better limit my creativity and just go with the regular slope away from the building. That should get us approved."
So let's, so let's use the blue canopy as an example, right? So I look at it, and I see no relationship of that canopy to the architecture of the building, so I'm going to call it odd, right? And so let's assume I convince you all that it is odd, and we put a red check on the worksheet, and we say, "You know what, you've gotten, you don't, you're not meeting this, you know, this requirement because you have an oddly shaped canopy." The applicant has an opportunity to tell us and convince us, "No, that's not oddly shaped, it looks like a big sombrero because I sell sombreros." I mean, you know what I mean? So there's an opportunity, I think, for them to explain and convince you, as the decision-makers, that maybe we got it wrong. But, you know, because we're filling out the checklist based on what we can get from their application, and they may or may not have given us enough information to have maybe taken a different take on that canopy, but without any other information, I think we all probably have an opinion on whether we think that blue canopy is oddly shaped or not. And that starts our conversation here about, does that meet the intent of the design manual or not? You guys will then land in a certain place, based on some staff input, because we will have done a staff report for you to consider. And then the applicant gets an opportunity to say, "Okay, I see you gave me a red check here. Let me, let me tell you about that canopy." And maybe we all go, "Oh, yeah, I get it now. It's a great design, we're totally into it. We're selling sombreros."
And I understand where you're coming from, even, but at the same time, I think we should give them a lot of encouragement to come in with different design and not just limit them to, "This is how the design looks like. Go look at the appropriate list. Don't look at the, if you look at, if you come in with, under the inappropriate list, we're going to have a long discussion."
Right.
And in his design, he's got a lot of things that he needs to get approval. And this is just another thing that he has to argue or defend, you know? He's just going to go with, with the regular canopy, you know? It's cheaper, you know, more regular, and it's appropriate. And I know, as a designer, putting on a hat designer, I know the city will approve it. I don't need to come up with something more creative that looks different, looks good. I don't need to do that. I don't need to fight this battle. I have other battles to fight the city. So I guess I just don't want to tie their hands on creativity by, by locking them down to, you know, things that, that, it seems like, you know, we need, we need to release them and have their creativity to come in and give us some good designs.
But isn't that the issue that we're facing?
Yes.
Yes. Personally, I kind of like this paragraph. I think of the U District driving down the Ave, when I think, when I see the vinyls and the oddly shaped, I would definitely like, because, you know, we're not talking the building, we're just talking about pretty much signage and just an awning. So I actually like that we're not allowing vinyl or oddly shaped awnings on our, on our streets. And actually, I might go, I might actually put on another requirement, that maybe we propose color restrictions. Maybe you can't have very, you know, like we did with the buildings, you can't have a very bright blue or something like that, maybe they have to be toned down.
Okay, so I think we're moving into comments as opposed to questions. So those are good, it's a good discussion, but let's hold off and get our questions answered first, and then we'll move into more substantive time for comments.
Question?
General?
Yes.
Should we include any guidance on building height here? Not necessarily what maximum height of a building might be, but guidance regarding building heights related to the enclosure section, for example. Where should a high-rise go versus a low-rise building, that kind of thing? Should it be consistent building height within blocks, or is that appropriate for some other standard?
So I think that, it's an interesting question. I think that because they've established, I'm, I'm not quite sure which page the enclosure is on, so I'm doing this from...
It's 80 of 93, it looks like.
Thank you. They basically established, you know, if you're setting back after four floors, then you're basically establishing a street experience of no more than four stories. And so, and then we also have the styles that have certain height maximums. And so I think between the two, what you're going to end up with is a character that's going to be predominantly four stories along streets.
Okay, so where would a high-rise be permitted in this, in the urban core? We're talking about nine to 10 stories there, something like that, 125-foot building?
Right. So, you know, in Vancouver, for instance, you have a sort of two, three-story podium with a taller structure behind that. Some of them are probably 15 or 20 stories. And so I'm not saying that this is intended to emulate Vancouver. I think they have a different, they're putting out a different vision for Isqwa. But I think in that sense, that if you're setting back 20 feet above four stories, then you are going to generally, from the street, perceive a four-story building, even if it's much taller.
Okay, yeah, I guess behind my question is some concern I've heard from the community about high-rises and how they might be integrated into Central Isqwa and so on.
So are you suggesting, are you trying to talk about changes to the actual heights? Or are you trying to talk about how to handle the heights that are allowed?
Right, the latter. That could we have some guidance in this document that would discuss that, especially because, say, on this page, 80 of 93, right, they're talking about the whole idea of enclosure within blocks and to have that consistent and so on. And it just occurred to me, well, would you allow a high-rise building within that? Would you allow a two-story building within that? If so, where's your idea of enclosure, right? Because that would be a block of uneven heights. It would be the opposite of enclosure.
I don't know that uneven heights are, I think that probably the gaps in the street wall are more impactful than uneven heights with, within a certain range.
Right, but similar kind of effect, yeah.
Right, so I think that the, you know, the one, two, three, four stories is not, I mean, I think we're unlikely to keep getting a lot of one-story buildings, just because to justify redevelopment, you're going to have to get more development on the site to pay for it. So we're probably looking at a street that feels like it's two to four stories. And so I'm not sure that a consistent height will be the key as much as a consistent street wall. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, I guess the concern still remains about where are we going to permit 12-story buildings? Do we have any guidance, for example, to do that at all, in this document or elsewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, the Central Isqwa standards have height limits in them.
Right, right. So that would mean that that building could occur anywhere within Central Isqwa, because it has a height limit of 125 feet.
Keith, what did you say?
So there's not in, so to clarify what Lucy said, not in the design manual, there's not, you know, so, so the architectural piece has some limitations on architectural styles based on height, and we uncovered that a week ago. That's just a week ago. And so, but for urban design, and I think the point that Richard's making is, you know, right now, the code, so now we're going from design manual to code, the code or the zoning standards for Central Isqwa have a maximum building height based on the zone, whether it's the core or the mixed-use area, it's got a certain limit of height. And whether you incorporate the density bonus or not gives you the ability to even go higher. I would say that, although this is, this is developing design issues like enclosure and street wall, if I had a piece of property and I wanted to put a 10-story building, and I'm in the core, I could do that. I have to pick the right architecture, which if I'm in the core, it's northwest contemporary, but I could do that on any block with any surrounding land use, based on the current, what's in front of us now, okay? So if there's, if there is a conversation that the commission wants to have about building heights and maximum building heights, that, that may be relevant, but may not be relevant to this particular tool. But that could be, again, a comment that gets conveyed back to the council as just a parking lot thing for the city to deal with, maybe in a different venue. I don't know, I don't know that that conversation is not going to happen somewhere soon, it just may not be associated with the Architecture and Urban Design Manual for Central Isqwa. So I don't, that's not a very satisfactory answer, but it's, it's the one I've got.
Thanks, yeah, it sounds like it's a little out of scope with the Ark and Design Manual right now, and that probably more like the Central Isqwa Development Design.
I think, so if I was, if I was going to choose to give a developer a clear understanding of what he can and can't do, I'd tackle it there and not in here, because this is more, this is more cakes and frosting, that's more main course.
More prescriptive.
Indeed.
Right, but, I mean, you're also bringing up an important point, is that these pieces are not unrelated, so.
On that same page, Lucy, on page 80 of 93, on the description, it says, "Upper floors above four shall be setback 20 feet." So do they mean it has to be exactly 20 feet, or did they intend to say at least 20 feet and to provide some leeway? Or do you, I shouldn't ask you what you think they thought, but the way it's written, it sounds like it has to be 20 feet in all cases.
I'm not doing a very good driving this document as I try and move through it, I'm sorry. I see it flash by and then stop. I think that's a great question, Mel, I don't know the answer. I doubt that the intent is that 19 feet 11 and 20 feet 1 are both unacceptable, but it's a good question.
Or the 25, you see a minimum, but having that as the maximum, too, sounds strange.
Yeah, they make the same reference on page 83 of 93 also. That provide, under descriptions, is provide a 20-foot setback. And on... And then the question, Mr. Chair, on, that I have on page 83 of 93, in addition to that 20-foot setback, on the first paragraph, it says that "The building adjacent to natural area shall be set back." Is there a definition of how far setback is? This is budding natural areas. So, the first floor, first four floors should be set back. The question that I have, do we know how far they should set back?
Well...
Or is there intent to be step back above?
So, the step back is...
Building itself, but the 20 feet.
Yeah, is 20. So, what they're saying is, so for the face of the building that's next to the creek, you have the building face, and then above four floors, you have to step it back 20 feet. And we got to unpack that and figure out if that's magic in any way. Because the idea there is, again, you want to open up that natural corridor to get more light, more sun, all that kind of stuff, and not just have a bunch of flat building walls against it. You know, plus, part of this concept is treating those as amenities for public interface. And so, you know, trails, we sat down with them and one of our bigger employers in town yesterday and talked about one of their proposed buildings that's going to come to you guys soon, and how they're treating their adjacency to Isqua Creek. And I think it was trail and creating public spaces on that side of the project is as important as how they relate to the street. So, I think, I think what they're saying here is that step back on that natural edge not only doesn't give you such a rigid urban form next to the natural amenity because that then becomes very abrupt, but it also then allows for more sun and wind and everything else to get into that space.
And you're using the same sort of scale techniques in both areas where you're anticipating pedestrians?
Right. I understand that, but if you read the two paragraphs, you know, if you read the two paragraphs, to me, it says the first four floors has to be set back, and it doesn't say how far.
So, where are you reading that, Ray? Because I don't...
Page 83.
No, I'm reading on 83. So, it says...
Guidelines and description. If you read the two paragraphs...
Buildings adjacent to natural areas, it doesn't say "shall be set back," it says "shall be stepped back." So, what that means is that treatment of stepping back upper floors is, that's what they're talking about. They're not saying setback, they're saying it'll be stepped back.
Well, actually, what they're, if you look under description, the second sentence where I'm sort of pointing, "Provide a 20-foot setback for all floors above the fourth floor."
Right.
So, I think wherever you're placing those first four floors, then you would have 20 feet exactly, and then go up additional floors if they're present.
Okay. So, the question that I have is that, to clarify what you just said, Kevin, is that the first four floors can be up against where the property line is, where natural areas is?
So, but that would also, you would have setbacks from the code anyway. They would already govern that.
So...
There'd be regular setbacks.
And maybe that's something we need to clarify. There's a setback.
Right, so there's, so back to the table we saw earlier on building heights also has setbacks? Yeah, setbacks. If it's a critical area, that's a different thing. But if it's just a natural amenity...
Sorry.
Yeah, and I think...
So, actually, if you look at page 70, let me see if I can get that up here. On 69, they have their... No, 62, I'm sorry. 70 of 93, which is page 62, that's what's green up here. They are describing, I think the page that you're looking at, Ray, is relevant, but it needs to be combined with this natural context page and the map on the page before, and that there are a number of, a number of actions that are necessary. And as both Connie and Keith pointed out, critical areas themselves have a required buffer and then another building setback area. So, you couldn't be right on either the buffer or the critical area.
Yeah.
But further, they're asking for, you know, so if you look at, and I completely agree with you, everything needs to be numbered so that we are not pointing at bullets. I visually like bullets better, but I've learned the hard way that that doesn't, that makes it hard to write staff reports and have conversations. But on the fourth bullet, under appropriate, "Public access, walkways between regulated creek or wetland, open space, and the building frontage." So, the intent is to get people into these areas. And so, you know, that may be part of a, it may be part of the building setback area, which can have something like a, you know, a paved trail. But it's beginning to give some breathing room, I guess, between the critical area and the building.
All that I'm seeing is that, you know, on page 83, the setback versus step back, I think maybe we need some clarification on that. Because first paragraph says setback, and then the second paragraph is that anything above four floors shall be setback. Well, I think the second paragraph should say step back with that 20 feet step back. But on the first paragraph, it should say setback.
We'll get this clarified.
No, I think they have it right. I think they have it right. I think they mean a step is go up and it steps back.
Right.
And they're saying that step, that step back has to be set back 20 feet.
The 20 feet should be a step back.
We'll fix the language.
Yeah.
I mean, we could just say it should be terrorist or something.
Okay.
Question, Mr. Chair? On, on page 82 of 93, under, oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry. Page 86 of 93. 86 of 93. Under inappropriate, we're not allowing or it's inappropriate to have blue tinted reflective and other opaque materials or treatment. Why is that? And it's the same thing on page 87 also. They say glazing that is tinted is inappropriate reflective and other opaque material.
What the rationale is behind that?
Well, we want, generally, we want, I think they added the word blue because we had questions. There's certain kinds of tinting that goes into windows that's kind of imperceptible, but improves the light quality inside. But mostly, what we're trying to get at is that it needs to be clear glass so that you're seeing that, you know, if we're going to put these active uses and these windows, you want to see what's going on there. That's part of that relationship between the public realm and what's going on in the buildings. So, I think what they're trying to get at is those are a list of some of the ways that you prevent that sort of visual connection.
Yeah. And I agree with you. That's probably what it is, have that transparency, that openness between inside and outside. But at the same time, you know, I've seen, and, you know, you can put a strip of reflective glass, that smoked glass that provides a little bit of a privacy inside. You can see the folks in there, but you can't see what they're eating. And have that strip of opaque, not opaque, but tinted shade that provides a little bit of privacy, so.
So, Lucy, I...
To put that under inappropriate, I guess, I don't quite agree with that. Or maybe if anything, it'd be limited number of tinted area in a glass or window pane, something.
Should we cover this in comments then, in discussion?
Sure.
Specific questions? More?
I had a question on page 75 of 93. So, under the guideline, it says, "Through block passages shall be provided to break up blocks over 240 feet in length." So, does that mean 240 feet in width or 400 in length? It's document page 67, Lucy. Draft 67.
Thank you. These little gray boxes are like almost imperceptible when I'm looking on this screen, so I apologize. It just takes me a while to find it. So, can you...
Just a touch above that, it's in the, you got it right there, the guideline. It says 240 feet in length.
Right.
So, does that mean it's a 240 feet in width or 400 in length, or neither?
So, a block is, so they've given us a maximum block length and a sort of a minimum block length of the 240. So, as you begin to, on either dimension of the block, if either one of those exceeds 240 feet, you're looking at a through-block passage.
Okay, so would that always be then 240? It couldn't be 240 feet in length because they're spacked 400 by 240, right? Length by width?
They may not always be that way. I mean, we have a lot of, I mean, part of the challenge that we're facing is those existing buildings. And so, as Carl pointed out, in a not Greenfield situation, we're going to be working around that. So, you may have blocks that are 240 by 240, or 240 by 340, or 240 by 420.
I see. So, they are saying anytime a block may be 400 feet in length, that it needs to be broken with a through-block passage?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Go for it.
If I could just make, I don't know whether this is too constraining, but would it be possible to go through page by page so that we're not jumping back and forth now that we're going to do comment? It sounded like we're moving on from questions to comments. Did I misunderstand?
Yeah. I think what I'd like to do first is ask if there's any comments from the public.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I heard the word comment.
Right. Well, no, that's what I said. But, so if you want to make comment, we'd like you to sign in and make your comment.
You'll remind me to sign in.
I will. Yes, I will.
I was going to say, there's no place for signing in.
I didn't put the sign-in sheet on.
Okay, my name's Connie Marsh, and I live up on Squawk. And so, I've been running around taking pictures of town and buildings. Okay. Which has been sort of fascinating. And eventually, you'll probably see some of the pictures anyway. But that has brought a bit of a new perspective into how this might function. So, where do I begin? You all were with me in the past when people would bring things in and you had a hard time being able to say, "No, we don't want that. We want this." And it was like, "Well, it doesn't say shall. It's not required. It says should." And this was an interpretation that we chose to make, and so here you are. So, as I'm walking those blocks and seeing all these things that didn't go well, I become way more firm in the conversation of, "When can you all say no? And how can you support it with what language when staff has presented it as okay?" And so far in this, I don't see that the language is there for you to use. I see lots of shoulds. I see, "If you were to choose, is this good enough?" And that doesn't seem like something to rest your feet on and say, "No, it has to be like this because this language says so." So, my bigger concern is our whole goal is to make it so you all can say no. And I'm not convinced. And perhaps what I would need is I would need a, the use of the new tool laid over the top of the CIDDS tool and try it and see if you could, you could make it happen, using even an existing building. Because there's plenty of buildings to say yes and no to out there in our town, I'm here to tell you. Because I don't want the same argument to happen after all of this time. Okay, so that is my overarching concern and some sort of potential solution to see how it would work for you all. Staff is trying to see how it works for them. Then, I have a little bit of heartburn over the fronts of buildings because you're supposed to pay attention to the critical area, the park, the potential pass-through, and the street. So, say you have a retail building with a back to a critical area, are you mandating a double entrance? I just don't know how many fronts a building needs to have. And then, when you put that over the top of where you can park, it turns into a puzzle that I haven't been able to unravel. I got some great examples of "Don't do this" in my pictures, but I so far haven't found the perfect thing. Not having the parks sort of lined out on a map when it says they need to be within X distance of, everything seems to be such a gap. If we're trying to create the green necklace and they've established a distance and there's no dots, I know that the map is in progress, but it does seem like we have some of the critical areas, though not all. The parks are conspicuously missing, and I think that would help. And then context. And I think they did okay on some of the context, but they didn't talk about the view protection. And I thought it was disturbingly difficult to understand how to protect the views of our great hills because that was the best thing about the walk-around town. And I don't want to lose that, but I don't see any guidance or language here that will help you protect one of our core values of the city. So, I would, I would say we need to get that language put into place because I don't think the CIDDS standards do it for us. Okay, I'm almost done, I swear. The setback from critical areas. We have filled the setback from critical areas buffers with parking consistently through town for the last, I don't, I don't even know, 30 years. So, every place I go, critical area, parking lot, building. And so, while you all seem to be saying we're going to continue a setback from the critical area buffer, these guys are saying, "Well, you can't have it be parking." And so, it has to be something. And so, I propose that you get rid of the setback and you say, "Well, if you do not reduce your buffer at all, you can put your trail in the outer two, three-quarters of the buffer, and you can put your building right up to a complete buffer and try to activate our critical area buffers with people because when they see them, they own them and they will protect them." And right now, they're hidden behind bushes at the backside of parking lots with faded signs behind fences. And it does the critical areas and us no good whatsoever. So, I would actually propose that as a change, and that would allow the developer actually to have a little more room in this labyrinth of things that they can't do. Okay. You're all looking at me with these eyeballs like, "What did she say?" Well, maybe somebody knows. Thanks.
You know, I'm going to say this as you try to walk by the sign-in sheet.
Where is the sign-in sheet?
I did it. I, I'll pull it out for you.
We'll just photocopy the one from last week.
No, but Mary's already on here.
We'll scratch it off.
I didn't say that.
I said it him.
I added, I added tonight's date to last week's.
Okay. So, thank you for your comments. Okay, so thank you for your comments. So, how about just general discussion? What, what do people want to say?
Or do we want to go through, as Lucy said, just go through page by page?
I'm sorry, that's right.
No, that's okay, I mean, I'm just proposing it.
I like that, because then they don't end up bouncing around all over.
I do have to confess that I like the page after page after page, as opposed to flipping back and forth. Unfortunately, a bit of a linear thinker in that regard. Well, a lot of a linear thinker in that regard, so.
Okay, so unless there's something on the cover of the urban design section, I'm on page sixty, which is page...
Page sixty-eight of ninety-three.
Sixty-eight of ninety-three.
So, any comments? About the next page, sixty-nine, the map, right?
Was that, the draft map to be refined, is that where we're going to? This one have to do with the changes with urban core, taking out that section, or?
No. I, I think there are a couple of things that we have been talking to Crandall or Rambula about, and it would be great if the commission has some thoughts about that. So, one easy example to identify is hillsides. Is it things ten percent, fifteen percent? We use fifteen percent at Isqua Highlands, but maybe ten percent's more appropriate here, or twenty percent's more appropriate here. You know, we haven't, I, I think that, that what they're identifying is an important thing, because, you know, there is this, you know, they've kind of indicated there's this ring of hillside, and as I pointed out, it continued here and then continued up here. You know, there's Cougar Mountain, there's sort of the toe of Squawk, and there's the edge of the Plateau, I guess. So, there, it's all along there, but, you know, we didn't know off the top of our heads what percentage that was, and, and wanted to figure out what was the right percentage, but, and unless you guys are topographic experts, percentages may not be very useful. Because if, if you think about it, there are many streets that are fifteen percent in Isqua.
No percentages on a bicycle. How much pain each one brings.
Well, I mean, for instance, I do know that a lot of the roads that are along this edge of Cougar Mountain have to be, you know, eighteen percent to get up. James Bush Road's an example, which I, even goes to twenty-two, I guess, at some point. So, that's a pretty steep hill. So, if you're thinking about that as an example, is, is it that kind of steepness at which point we want to have this kind of, this kind of relationship, this kind of architectural and site planning gesture? Or is it a more gentle slope would be appropriate, too?
So, Lucy, so I'll just admit I'm confused on this one, so I'm gonna just go ahead and maybe say something that's not very informed. So, are there any hillsides within central Isqua, or are they all backdrops?
So, there are, there are central, there are, and the commission is painfully aware, Inniswood, Gateway, Gateway Senior, Reva, and we also know the very preliminarily proposed Black Nugget Hotel. Those are, or Fred Meyer site, those all have...
So, okay, so let's just stop there for a second. So, I guess what I would say is there's a difference for me from taking a look at Cougar, Tiger, or Squawk, and the horrible-looking wall behind Fred Meyer. Right? Still a hillside, but I don't know that I want to see it. Right? I mean, so, I mean, I think the question is, is are there different hillsides, or if there's a certain slope, we treat them all the same? Because, I mean, that one's got Scotch broom and other invasives growing on it, behind a falling-apart soldier pile wall. And, I mean, I think, I appreciate the fact that we have buildings that cover some of it up. Right? As opposed to maybe what we've been talking about in terms of framing views for like Cougar, Squawk, and Tiger. So, I guess, you know, for me, and again, this is my ignorance for understanding the rest of this chapter of the manual, is what are we using the designation of hillsides for? Is it for mostly kind of views? And then, are they all the same or not?
So, I think it'd be great to have a conversation about views. I think that this is, this particular one, the way I've read it, not an expert, I'm guessing as much as anyone, is more about building form and how it relates to, or highlights or respects these certain kinds of natural areas. Now, I would say, because this was one of the thoughts I had in, in thinking about this, is, and, and I think you, the commission saw this with, for instance, Gateway Senior, that when you have buildings that are on, that are coming down the slope, at, you know, starting at the top, like Gateway Senior, then you've got certain kinds of things that you're trying to do to not just have a big blank wall of concrete that's holding up all the active areas. And so, what you require on a hillside may be different than what you require next to something that's going to maybe be flatter, like a creek or a wetland, or other kind of open space. Because if you look at this map, this isn't just about critical areas. I mean, for instance, the ponds in Pickering are there. So, these are, you know, so a question for the commission is, what kind of green spaces do we want to have that sort of treatment for? Is it only creeks and wetlands, or does it include other green areas that are not just undeveloped land, but land that's going to remain that way? So, that's one question. Another one is, what kind of relationship are we looking at for hillsides? And then, the third would be the view question. Go.
Well, you know, looking at the description for hillsides on, on page seventy of ninety-three, there's wooded hillsides greater than ten percent in slope. I think that would eliminate the Black Nugget Road hillside, because there's no...
Forest?
No forest left up there, yeah, it's just a slump. It's...
And that's a really good question, that was one of our questions, was if it's not forested now, but you might want to reforest it, or, you know, there may be architectural treatments you want, even if it's not forested. I, I mean, these are, these are the questions.
Yeah, but to me, it would seem appropriate, because in talking about building design adjacent to it, trying to make it in harmony, well, it's a big wall and dirt above. I don't, I don't want to necessarily compliment that, I guess.
How can I replace it?
Right, right, exactly, so. So, it seems like the only other real hillside that comes into play, then, would be the, down by Inniswood, showing that hatch part.
So, I, I do think it's important to note that this whole, you know, sort of hillside that comes along here...
Well, so even though it's not in the central area...
Well, this is all in central Isqua, up where BMC lumber is, and...
So, the hillside is right outside of it, but since you're adjacent to it, it comes into play.
That, and that's, no, thank you for the clarification, yes.
That's great. Okay.
And, you know, to some extent, that's true here. You do have the site sloping, but most of the hillside is outside of central Isqua, but is that backdrop to central Isqua.
Well, do you want us to go to, to page seventy, to look, or beyond them? If we go past the map on page sixty-nine, do we want to talk about page seventy, then?
Is the question you're having on, on this map, what would constate, what would constitute, now, let me get over there, hillsides? Have they specified a percent slope for hillsides, and that's what's shown in the green hash?
Just ten percent.
So, they said ten percent.
Right.
I'm, I'm pretty confident that they did not have GIS technology to map the ten percent slopes. I think that, you know, when you look at our topography on some of the maps that they did have, it's, it's apparent where, you know, you've got a hillside just from the tightness of the contour lines. So, I think what this map represents is obvious hillsides that are surrounding central Isqua, not a ten percent slope, per se.
So, and you're asking if we think that's okay? Or we want to redefine it more or less?
And I think, to be fair, I'm not asking you to give me a percentage, but to maybe talk about if you have thoughts about how you would like to, to have these relate, which kind of hillsides do you think are important to either in terms of viewing, or building into or up against? And the same with the natural areas, parks, and open spaces, do, when you look at some of the areas on the map, as I mentioned, like Pickering Ponds, or some of these areas, for instance, near the Commons, not all of those are wetlands. Some of those are kind of green corners, and I, I haven't had time to dig in to figure out what they are, and I'm not asking you to do this instantaneously, but to simply, if you have thoughts about what kind of natural areas, open spaces, and parks, you would like to see this plan use special techniques relative to.
Well, I really like the thought of protecting our hillsides from development. You know, we've seen lots of instances of where it's gone wrong. You know, definitely, it's a development to our further west on I-90, where there's some...
Bellevue.
What's that?
Bellevue.
Yeah. Where there's some landslides already, and, you know, who's dealing with that? I think it's good to stay away and preserve them, because that's part of what makes Isqua so, so great.
So, I guess, Lucy, as I read the, the sentence under guideline on page seventy, I'm think, I mean, I think it's not exactly right. So, I mean, I think, so you could take out, and the reason why I say that, is you take out the first premise and just start with new development, and I think that's a true statement, no matter where it is. I mean, we want new development to support the unique setting of central Isqua. I think that's a period. I think, I think what they're trying to say is if you're near one of these natural areas, you should, your development should support and strengthen the natural area, the natural context that it's in. And I think it didn't quite, it doesn't come, quite come across that way.
Okay.
Yeah. Might.
You know, on, on that page, at the, down at the bottom, the inappropriate, just in this whole idea, and trying to read through this and understand what they're meaning about complimenting and reinforcing the, that natural environment, I got kind of concerned. I'm not sure if this is in line, maybe with what Connie's talking about, but the inappropriate things, the large expanse of impermeable, impermeable paved outdoor areas, or large expanses of manicured landscaping areas, it sounds like they're saying the only thing you can do is like have a trail or a natural area next to it. And then, to me, it seems to conflict with the idea that we want people to be able to enjoy those open areas, those natural areas. And if we're saying you can't build a plaza out there for people to sit and have lunch or something...
So, the key word there, so, and, and maybe I'm reading too much into it, but for me, the key word is impermeable. And I guess the question is, is so what if your plaza was pervious? You know, what if it had more of a, of a natural kind of context to it? I don't think, I don't think they're saying you can't have a public space on that face. I think what they're trying to say is it should be designed in a way that one, you know, maybe doesn't, maybe it's not just concrete, right? Maybe that's, what they're saying is you need to take a different design approach to it if you're on the natural side of the, the project.
Well, but, I understand, but I was thinking about, with the Atlas, some of the discussion has been about, well, it was not oriented to take advantage for the residents of what's going along the creek there. And I think, well, if you want to bring residents down, and if you want to have outdoor seating, it gets harder to do that, I think, in, you know, compact gravel, or, or grass, or whatever. And to have a courtyard that's impermeable, I think, could be a nicer way to get people in. And that would be, I'm assuming, restricted by what you can do in any buffer zone, right? You couldn't do impermeable...
Well, I think, I think that the, the point that Keith's trying to make is an interesting one, because I don't think under-appropriate, there's anything that would indicate, you know, that would complement that and say these larger outdoor, I mean, I, I agree with what you're saying, Mel, that, I mean, think about Pickering, I don't know whether you ever walk around Pinkering Pond, or whatever it's called.
Yeah.
You know, Costco has all those large terraces that face out there, and that's one of the nice things about walking there on a sunny day at lunchtime, is they're full of people eating, and, you know, quite frankly, you can go up there and sit with them, and they're not going to know what, you know, there's enough people there that they don't know who it is, and they're certainly welcoming of that. And, and so, I would agree that we, if that's what we want, and it's simply about material, then we need to add something. If it's about not wanting that, I'm not sure that we would agree, because we do want that kind of interaction. And, and based on some of the conversations that we've had with Crandall or Rambula, I think they would say the same thing. They, they want people to enjoy it. I think, I think that they're trying to find ways that it might feel less urban than what you would do at a, you know, a corner of a building, right up against an intersection. That kind of urban plaza would be different than the kind that you would build facing a wetland. So, I, I think they're suggesting that, that sort of distinction, that isn't coming through at this point, if, if that's our intent.
Yeah, or, or in my mind, I think maybe, in my mind, they've gone too far, partly because you can't do manicured landscaped areas either, which I presume means grass. So, if you can't have a grassy area, and you can't have impermeable surfaces, so it's, I don't, you know, maybe it's bark, or sand, or compact gravel, or something.
But it can't be compact gravel, that's actually considered impermeable, too.
Right, right, yeah.
So, I mean, I, I think it's a good point.
Yeah.
Okay?
So, the general sense is we do want to provide public access to those natural areas, and not, not restrict it if there's a convenient way to do it that doesn't impact, adversely impact the natural area.
Right, and, and I think it's, just to take what you're saying, Richard, a little further, it's not just access, because that could be a trail. So, but it's also a space where you might be able to sort of linger, or gather, or, and meditate, or, you know, just enjoy the, the beauty of that critical area, and, and have that sort of awareness that Connie was talking about.
Some more thoughts on page seventy? We're gonna move ahead. I know it's cool in here and it's hot out there, so we can stay all night, but...
Speak for yourself.
So, let's move ahead, page seventy-one, any discussion, comments, concerns?
Boring.
I'm sorry.
Did you say that out loud?
I did.
Well, you know, private development, especially residential, commercial, or to sell service, background buildings. And I, I don't know, I don't know that, I don't want really bodybuildings, but I don't know that I want people to design background buildings, per se.
So, maybe we should take a step back and just discuss what that, when you think of a background building, what does that mean to you?
You know, that there's no modulation, it's just going to be a boxy structure that's tan or gray, and all the same windows, and...
So, I, that, I would say a background building was something else. I wouldn't say that it didn't have interest, and it didn't have modulation, but that it's... It's, it's, okay, this may be a terrible analogy. It's like a well-tailored suit, you know? It, it's, it's very elegant, it's beautifully detailed, it's attractive to look at, but it does, it, it's not a floral print with wide lapels and bell bottoms, so that you cannot miss in velour. You can't miss it. So, so, to me, that doesn't mean that it's, it's unattractive, or bland, or boring, it just isn't, doesn't stand... It just isn't, doesn't stand out more than the next building than the next building. They're all well-designed, they all contribute to the public realm, but they aren't doing so at the expense or in competition with the next building.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. I think that, no, I think that's a very good analogy. I just don't know that I agree with their premise because I, I think I'd like to see interesting buildings that fit within the Isiqua palette that we're talking about, but that are interesting, not background. I don't know what other people...
And it might be as simple as changing the word. I agree with what Lucy's saying. It's like, it, it wants to, given all the styles that we've approved in that area or in general, I think we're going to get interesting buildings just by virtue of that. And then it's our discretion to make sure they're refined and appropriate. So I think we'll get them. I, I think the word "background buildings" maybe needs to be changed to buildings that, that, you know, are...
Unobtrusive.
Unobtrusive or, or, or comply with the, the, the guidelines in some fashion, some way to reference the guidelines, because I think there is a lot of richness in the guidelines that, that's going to occur no matter what. So, so, but I agree that the word is, is troubling, but the notion of it, I agree with, especially with, you know, say, the context of the parking garage, going back to the parking garage discussion. We don't want it to be automobile-centric. Yes, we know it's a parking garage, but we want it to fit within the context of the other buildings and, and the block. So we just don't want, we want appropriate screening. We don't want it to be served by a series of ramps and signs and, and things that call it out as a parking garage. When somebody goes into the garage and turns on their headlights, I don't think you want to be blasted, you know? So there's things you can do to mitigate it from being automobile-centric, although we know it's a parking garage. And, and I think how you mitigate that is, is, is it has to fit with the context of, of these design guidelines. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Let me, let me just ask you one question, Mel. So if we, if we, Maple Street Office Building, which you know well, which I think is a very handsome and elegant building, it is a well-tailored suit. I think of it by my, so I don't think of that as a pejorative to say it's a background building. You may feel that, so, and so that may be the, the wrong term. But I think of that, in terms of what I'm trying to say about a background building, I think of the Maple Street Building as a background building. If there was a series of those kinds of buildings going down the street, different colors, different materials, you know, maybe, you know, I think that's a three-story building, if there was a four-story building, then a two-story building, I think that they would make a very handsome, coordinated, interesting, street face. And none of those buildings would, if they were all sort of of a similar ilk to the Maple Street Building, none of them would be more important than, than the next one. And, and so that, to me, is what a back, a background building is, not that it has been stripped of all of the, you know, the roof, the detailing, the articulation, the setbacks, an entry that draws attention to itself, where you know where to enter the building, you know? So I, I don't know if that helps, and I'm not trying to say anything negative about the Maple Street Building.
No, I think that's good, because I would agree with you. When I look at like what they're showing in terms of the historic building, you know, the very boxy structure, same windows and everything. And Maple Street, you've got slopes in the roof, you've got setbacks and balconies and, and so I'd agree. And maybe it's good to have it this way in terms of it gives us more of a way to pull developers back in if we think we need to.
Exactly. I think it's a great tool.
But still have, if the Maple Street worked within this context for staff, I'd be happy with it, so.
I think, I think it might be easier to get rid of the term "background" and just do an edit, because the, the real bottom line of what you're trying to do is to have the residential and commercial architecture not compete, but rather support, enhance and define the urban fabric. You know, I mean, you're, you're introducing a term that at least one person, maybe more, is confused over. Why, why do that?
Right. And, and, and I think that if we're all comfortable with the way we've described it, then we can fund, we can use that as a sort of launching point for the description without necessarily have, using a term that we feel may be misleading.
Right. Mr. Chair, I, I would agree with what you just said about Maple Building, Lucy. And, you know, if it's continued, that's what we're looking for, but if we continuously have those buildings all over Isiqua, gee, why do I need to get a new architect? We'll just go to, I think it's Methune that designed, and just go to Methune and they have the plans, so let's just, you know, we're, we're trying limiting, you know, we have to be careful not to limit the architect creativity, you know? True, that's a good building, and I would agree with you. And that's what we kind of like to have somewhere close to that sort of design. But I don't think we want to limit them into, yeah, continuously that, yeah, just copy that over and over throughout the whole street and you'll get it approved. And from the applicant's point of view, he wants to get it approved as soon as possible. So he comes in with the same elevations as Maple Building, but the inside is changed a little bit and then get it approved. So again, you know, I, I, I guess I'm really leery about just saying, use this example and then go with it. And I don't know what the right language is to say, you know, this is what we want, but don't, don't limit yourself to what we think we want.
I think we're doing a reasonable job of saying, we like this, we don't like that. You know, if there's things that we approve, if it looks like this, that's good. If it doesn't look like this, if, if, if it falls outside those characters and parameters, don't waste your time because we don't want to have to look at it.
Yeah, and they, you know, if the designer applicants knows what we want, they'll just go ahead and design the way it is, the way that they know will approve and, and not have that creativity that they have. That's what I'm trying to remind everybody that, you know, we should kind of let them open up the creativity and let them come in with some design that they can, that we can accept. I don't, you know, you, can we say something, give us something that we think we want? We can't say that. So you have, that's why we're going through all this exercise to write down what, what we think we want.
Right.
Well, I, I think one of the conversations for the commission to potentially weigh in on is, you know, Isiqua has grown tremendously. It is still a town of 35,000 people. And there are going to be a, a limited number of civic buildings. You know, if we're saying that civic buildings, for instance, are sort of that punctuation that, where we would look for more flair, more interest, more out-of-the-box architecture potentially. It, you know, we have none of those in Central Isiqua, maybe, right now. I mean, I guess, well, yeah, Fire Station 72, I, I think that's a very...
Library.
That's downtown.
Okay.
So I, I, I think we have some good civic architecture, do not misunderstand me, none of that is in Central Isiqua. I don't know how many more civic buildings will be built in Central Isiqua. We might get a school. We might get one, if they can assemble the land. Parks might be another opportunity for less understated, you know? So the question is, what are those punctuation marks where we can give guidance and say, these are the things that with these sort of handsome, public-oriented, complimentary buildings, what are going to be the punctuation marks that help us orient and give interest within this district? And I don't know if you have thoughts about what those are.
Well, I don't know if you can say, this is what we want, you know, and then say, these are not, you know, some of them, they can come in really nice, you know, even if it's inappropriate, you know? Include that into some appropriate elements and they'll come out very nice, you know? And so don't say, you know, these are inappropriate. Don't ever come in with a vinyl material canopy, because that's not what we want. If you come in, the whole project is out the window. You know? So we, we shouldn't say that. That's my thinking, is that let them come in and try to incorporate something nice that we can, and we can say yes or no or make some changes in there.
So, so I think, Ray, that the challenge is, it is not, it has to be predictable.
Yeah, true.
And, and so while, and, and, and I think what we're, what we've heard, you know, the way Connie's describing it, I think some of the frustration that the commission has had and the council and the community is, we've had to say yes to these things because, you know, honestly, we focused on urban design and we're seeing that that has not gotten what we wanted. So we're going to add architectural styles, materials, colors, which we very, we intentionally avoided. That did not get us the results we want. I think what we've heard as staff, and I think what Crandall or Rambla has both heard and proposed, is something that is more directive, that is, I don't know whether, I mean, I know they say it's prescriptive, I don't, I'm not quite sure we're at prescriptive language yet, and, and that's something we're going to be talking about in that final document. But I, I, while, you know, I'm trained as an architect, I appreciate the creativity you're asking for, but I think if that's what we want, we're not going to have an architectural style guide because we, and, and we are going to have an architectural style guide, so let me just put that footnote out there. Because we want to put edges to this. I believe that good architects will find ways to be creative because their clients are going to look for ways to make their build, you know, it's, it's the very concern that Mel's raising, you know? People want their buildings to feel special, but they're going to find that specialness not in the huge gesture or the bright color. It's going to be in maybe their entryway or roof or material or unusual window combination or something like that. So, and, and, you know, the example you've given, the vinyl weather covering, we're not going to say, we deny your project, you have vinyl weather covering. We're going to condition the project and we're going to say, we like that you have weather covering, it needs to be a different material. So, and that, that may be a bad example if the commission thinks that vinyl weather covering is the right thing. But I think that we are narrowing down the choices to try and create a range that we think will result in something that feels more fitting in the city.
I agree. And I'll say, you know, this requires a certain amount of trust, trust that you are going to get good designs. And I think one thing you can trust architects to do is push this envelope continually. And I think it's up to us to then interpret whether they're pushing it in the right direction. I, I say too, a project gets way better when it has constraints. So if we put a framework around this, I think it's going to force this level of refinement that isn't occurring now. Sort of, anything's an option now, anything, you know? A blue building, a beige building, a red building, all three. I think once you put a framework around it, it forces people inward to a degree and boxes them in, but what it really forces is that the quality goes up, the refinement gets better, and they're, they're going to find the way, especially with, you know, depending on who your client is. I mean, to, to your point, Lucy, is, is the client's going to want their building to be distinctive. They want it to yield high rents. They want it to be an attractive building that fills up quick and, and stays full. So I think there's a certain amount of trust we have to place in that, but then we also have to operate as that, that, they're going to push on us and we have to push back. And I think that friction is where we're going to get a lot of distinction and quality. That's my opinion.
So unless there's more compelling dialogue, let's move on to page 72 of 93.
Are we all voting for the bottom one?
See, and that's an instance where we just say no.
Comments? Thoughts?
This one, where I thought we should replace that middle picture with the library. Our library looks way better than that building. I, I did have one question. I'm not, I just have a question mark about the corporate identities expressed through building material. And I know that, I mean, the bottom one, I think, is obviously not something we would be looking for, but is there the possibility of other corporate identities that would fit? An REI sign or something like that? Would that fit in the Isiqua thing?
So there...
Or do we just want to keep it a blanket, just keep them out?
So I think you're raising a good point. So I don't think that constrains signs. I mean, signs are not a part of this at this point. I think that it does, I think that it's going to be a challenge for some corporate models, you know? A red is a classic. Pickering barn red, yes, other reds, no.
Krispy Kreme would not be able to be built.
Well, I, so I don't know that Krispy Kreme, I mean, I'm doing this from memory, okay? It, it is a corporate architecture. I, I think that, and, and maybe that's the, I think that, that corporate architecture that fits with the architectural style manual is going to be okay. But if your corporate architecture, I mean, this is obviously an extreme one, but, you know, not all, well, most corporations have an urban model. I mean, you know, that's the example I think of first, and this is, again, not architectural. One of the challenges we had years and year after year at Isiqua Highlands was they kept bringing in their suburban model and we kept saying, we need your urban model. We know you have one, you need to do your urban model here. And so I think that, that while they do have cer, certain corporate, you know, they want a distinctive image, there's often a variety of ways that they can achieve it without necessarily losing all of their identity.
Yeah, so like, say, a Target building that's in downtown Seattle, wouldn't be able to do a big red Target on a building like that, right?
That's their sign.
Yeah, yeah.
So now our economic development director will weigh in.
So, so one of the things that may want to be in the guidelines section, because I think it's worth maybe unpacking a little bit, is, you know, what it doesn't talk about, because this is about contrast, right? And you could maybe say the same thing about harmony and it's, right now, so I'm going to go, and I'm going to go build a new project in Central Isiqua somewhere. Well, the stuff on both sides of me are 1980 strip mall, right? So, so nobody's telling me I should be, have contextual harmony with those things, right? And so I guess the question here, and this actually came up in a conversation we had yesterday, is, you know, where is the opportunity for someone who's really kind of the first redevelopment project in a particular area to set that style? You know, going back to Maple Street Building, you know, you, that you, you can now make, there needs to be some sort of at least conversation about, there's now a context there that somebody on a adjacent property needs to work with in some way, right? It doesn't have to match it, but it needs to at least acknowledge it and, and reflect it in its design. In a lot of places in Central Isiqua, there is no context that we want to take forward for the next 20 years because we expect the whole thing to redevelop, maybe in some parts of Central Isiqua. So maybe what we need in the guidelines section is also some text about kind of the pioneers within a certain sub-area to be able to basically choose and not have us say, well, there's no, there's no, it doesn't, it, it doesn't have context with anything else. I don't, I mean, I don't know where that goes in here, but it seems like somewhere we need to address that piece, because otherwise I could see us having maybe not clear discussions with applicants of saying, hey, everything around me is throwaway. I'm going to now be the pillar of, you know, and I'm going to set the style for this, this next block. Maybe that's okay, maybe it's not. And I just don't know, right now, I don't know how to deal with that. So we just might need to have them put some thought into that piece, because we know there's going to be... there's going to be places where it's going to be, even though it's not greenfield, it's a semi-virgin redevelopment property.
When you write in the harmony section, the page before, a good neighbor's a new building or development that supports rather than competes with the established character of the area, and maybe you don't want it to...
Exactly.
Yeah.
You know, maybe I don't want to be compatible with the Big O tires. Maybe I do.
I think it's Big O tire.
Exactly.
Good point. Agreed. Other comments on page 72? I'm going to intentionally skip page 73, unless somebody has some real concern with a blank page.
73.
About 74.
Comments on 73?
I think Carl, when he brought up the fact that basically his community's built, and so I think there may be value in, in setting this, setting up this design guide as a aspirational in some part that says, when the opportunity creates itself to incorporate these, these design guides, we're going to do it, but we're not going to impose them on already existing stuff. There may be some value in trying to make a statement somewhere, and maybe it already does, I just didn't notice.
So, is, or, is what you're saying that if, well, I...
All I'm, all I'm saying is that when we have the chance to move closer to this model, we want to do it. That's all I'm saying.
Right. And, and that, you know, that's something we, that, this is the hardest thing to do, is how you incrementally redevelop toward a vision. And I think one of the things we're looking forward to is some more conversations about how you do that in a way that makes sense, as, as you only have partial redevelopment of a block, for instance. Yeah.
So, and Lucy, to that point, I mean, so inappropriate on page 75 of 93, you know, one of the things that they talk about being inappropriate is a parcel passage. And I guess the question is, you know, there are going to be times, let's say that white building in the, the bottom photo is a redevelopment, that's a new building, let's just pretend, right? And so, we could get that passage potentially along that building, but then maybe that next piece, which is in the yellow, we can't get until that next piece of property redevelops. So, the question is, is what do you do? Are they saying, don't get that parcel, partial, I don't even, can't say partial passage. Oh, my gosh, I need to go sleep. You know, you know, I don't know, I, what, what are they saying? Don't do it? Or get it in maybe entitlement, but not build it? I mean, I think it, I don't understand, because it's all going to be incremental, right? We're not, we're not going to get potentially a whole block built at a time. And so, if, if the direction here is, don't do things in small pieces, if it's part of a bigger plan to get maybe a through-block connection, or a mid-block, you know, accessway, maybe we got to do it in pieces. And so, I don't know, I, I'm not sure what to do with that.
What about if we just add the word permanent, partial passages?
Well, except that it could be five years that, or 10 years.
No, but again, if it's designed to eventually go through when the next place gets developed, as opposed to, here's a passage that we know will never get redeveloped.
So, so you could potentially move the or in front of dead end, and have it be dead-end, partial passages, just because you want me all to say that one more time?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry. So, because I think that's the point, is you don't want to get, you don't want to have a road to nowhere. You don't want a, a mid-block crossing that goes to the back of a building, right? And so, you know, so if there, if we know it's likely to be dead end, we might then, through permit review, say, okay, in this particular case, don't do that, because that sends a bad message to our community, because we're sending them somewhere that doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah.
My interpretation of that was that it's mid-block, that it just, you don't allow someone to end a passage mid-block, because going back to it incrementally, you know, you develop one block, and you have that partial passage, and say the next block hasn't been redeveloped yet. Well, once it is, you want that, that passage already there to connect to now the next one.
Can I ask you a question about the nature of them? Are they, are they easements, or are they right-of-way?
I think that, I don't know, well, probably easements, but that's, that's a good question. I mean, I, I think that was the question that Ray brought up. Are these...
Who maintains?
City's responsibility, or, I, I mean, there are different sides of the same coin. Is, are they dedicating them as right-of-way? My guess is not, but then you would want some kind of easement that allowed at least the through-block part of it to be used by the community.
And I guess my question is, goes down to who pays for creating it, not maintaining it necessarily. I, I guess that's part two of the question, then, who creates it? Then it's a, a question of, if, if you get a critical mass of development, then is the onus on the city to come in and create it, so to speak, if it's right-of-way? Or is it always on the developer to improve that?
So far, it's always on the developer.
Can they defer that improvement?
I mean, it's generally been on the developer. I mean, you know, at some point, I don't, I don't think we're there, but at some point, the city could decide, we're going to build this street, this plaza, this through-block passage, because we believe that will spur a certain kind of redevelopment in this area. That, I don't think that there's a particular, you know, pioneer project, or, you know, priming of the pump that the city has identified that they want to undertake.
Okay.
And one very good, a good example is the townhomes that are built on the south side of where Dick's Sporting Goods is. And they've got, just right across that parking lot, that pedestrian walk-through, which seems like it's private. There's no street that goes through, but it's open to the public to walk through.
It's a required plaza, linear plaza, that was, the peanut gallery is commenting.
That's a private plaza, then I take it, but it's open to the public.
With an easement to, to allow the public to go through.
Perfect.
I mean, actually, when they were asking for local examples, I sent that one to them and asked if that, you know, represented the kind of through-block passage, because it is wider than we've typically done those through-block passages.
Yeah.
I, I think that the, it's at least 30 feet wide, and then there's another 10 feet or something to buildings. So, you know, you're looking at something in the probably 50-foot range.
Let's move ahead, 76.
Lucy, just one minor typo on there, under appropriate, that...
On which page?
Oh, 79.
Okay.
Under appropriate, the first paragraph says, maybe least obtrusive to, just sort of stopped.
Thank you.
On the subjective typos, I'd like to raise, my tech rating, I just can't leave it behind. This is a draft document in work, right? But I have probably several hundred markups on this so far. So, I hope that at the end, we have a definite responsibility assigned for the final draft, for an editor to go through all of this, because, you know, it's not extremely clean at this point.
Thank you.
About page 80.
I guess the one question about the setback, whether it's at least or exactly.
Yeah.
And I, I guess opinion-wise here, I don't know that I agree with, you can only have one upper-floor setback, and that, you know, it's four stories, one setback, and that's it.
We'll ask them to explain that, so their rationale, and then I think we can deliberate on whether that's a good reason or not, as opposed to multiple setbacks on upper floors.
Yeah. Because I, I don't know that it would detract necessarily from buildings, and if they, developer wants to set it back a couple times, I don't see where the harm would be.
I think they're always trying to avoid setbacks in the progress of the project.
How about page 81?
Or step backs.
I have one comment here, under appropriate, the second bullet point, it might be, might spell it out in the design codes, but should we be prescriptive on the pedestrian sightlines for how high off the ground the windows have to be?
Off the ground, or relative to the grade, or both?
Relative to, it would be great if it's pedestrian sightline.
Is this a A2, in essence, where locate window openings above pedestrian sightlines?
Yes. Locate window openings above pedestrian sightlines. Do we want to be more prescript, prescriptive there?
A good actual minimum.
Elsewhere, they indicate it as five feet, if it is the pedestrian sightline.
I can't find, I can't...
So, maybe that is our gold standard, but they should say it.
Oh, it's elsewhere?
Well, they do have, they do reference pedestrian sightlines where they do want transparency. And they say, they use five feet as the benchmark. So, maybe, and that is it. So, anything, it needs to be above that five feet.
They do it on page 87, where they're talking about ground floor transparency for retail, ground floor retail.
But I think your point is a good one. They should just say it here, as well as say it there.
So, Lucy, also on A1, I mean, I think we have the same question about one foot six inches and four feet. Are those super magic, or is there a range there that's, that's allowable, right? I mean, that's pretty darn specific.
Well, we did ask for clarity.
Well, that's clear. I mean, there's no ambiguity about one foot six inches.
And I, I would wonder, on the sightline, I wonder maybe about not being prescriptive, and that they're saying it's appropriate to locate them above sightlines, but not that you have to. Now, if a developer came in and said, we want to have our, these windows to be at three feet...
I think part of, so that, so I could get, so part of the, I'll, I'll maybe pose the opposite side of that. So, so they build it that way, and then all the tenants move in, and they don't like that level of visibility into their space. And so, then you get things like furniture, and, you know, butcher paper, and stuff in the windows, so nobody can look in. So, you know, I, I agree, I love the fact that it, you, because what we want is, we want that ability to kind of have that active sidewalk by being able to see into some of those. But you get, so you get some bad behavior too, right?
So, the other way that you see it is when you have specific, you know, when you have these height limits, and we're, I'm seeing this in the U District a lot, where the ground floor, they're, they're pushing the ground floor down. So, you get these sort of troglodyte units. And that's also uncomfortable, because then people are really looking into everything that's going, so then they've always got shades on their windows. So, I think it's, it's trying to, as, as Keith said, establish a level at which it will be comfortable on both sides, you know, for kind of the right level of engagement.
On the same page, there are a number of pages in this section with no inappropriate section. Is that because it's just not appropriate to include, and there are no examples of inappropriate images there either? Same next page.
Speaking of the next page, 82, comments? Yeah, good.
Under appropriation, appropriate, under appropriate, the last paragraph, it talks about accommodation outside seating, dining, retail, limited landscape, or race planters. I, I wonder, should we include railings in there? As a, as a merchant, you know, every square, you know, it's, it's money. So, if you put planters in there, planters takes up more room versus just railing, you only have a couple of inches that eats into your, your space. So, I wonder, should we include the word railing, and have them have that option to go into that?
It says may include, so it could be other things, so railings would be acceptable?
Yeah.
I, I, I think that there, so I don't know that, I want to make sure I'm tracking what you're, what you're getting at. So, there's, the first sentence is, the sort of activities that we want. And the second sentence is how landscape could be appropriately incorporated. So, while the landscape may be part of defining those areas, and railings would also define those areas, I don't think that they're trying to actually address the tools that you're using to define cafe seating. I think that they're trying to identify appropriate ways for landscape to be incorporated.
But do we want landscape, or do we, and not railing?
I, I think you could have railings, or you could not have railings. I don't think they're trying to say, talk about railings with the seating, although you're, you're absolutely right. Most restaurants, if they serve alcohol, are going to have to have railings.
Yeah.
I think they're really, the second sentence is really just trying to get at how, what appropriate landscape would look like.
I think Carl's right. It would be a possibility. This is just a may include this, and say you can't have them.
Related to that, on description B, though, doesn't it say that landscaping is required here? Do we want that? Or is that just copy and paste from the previous section?
Section?
Yeah. If you look at description B, it looks like it's calling for required landscaping for these setbacks. Yep. Down below, when it describes it as appropriate, it qualifies it as optional, it looks like.
Yeah. Could we say something like, you know, items that's used for, for screening, could, i.e., landscaping, race planters, railings, even more, more, more options? See, right now, the way I read it is that, yeah, you could use landscaping, or race planters, or landscape pots. I didn't, I don't get the impression that railing is okay there, although, you know, you read into, you say, well, railing could be. So, I guess my proposed language, maybe we can change the language to say that, that includes, i.e., landscaping, great, uh, uh, great planters, or railings of some kind. What do you think?
And if we're going optional there, did we want to delete it up above in description, where it says maximum 10-foot landscaped setback?
Well, I think the lang, you have a level of precision that is amazing. So, I think what you're highlighting is that the way that, so, part of the confusion for me was, I was looking at the lower B when you were talking, and then realized there was an upper B. So, the upper B, the way it's written is, it implies that the entire setback is landscaped. And the lower one implies that landscape is a part of that setback, but not the entirety of it.
Not only that, optional, right? Because the image at the bottom of that page shows that kind of setback, and there's no landscaping really included in it.
So...
I think if you take out the word landscaped in the upper B, correct?
Yes.
I think we're good.
Yes.
Agreed. Move ahead, page 83.
Yeah, on page 83. Yeah, on page 83, I guess my comment is, maybe we should clarify the word setback and step back. Because they're switching back and forth. To me, step back is like a marriage cake, it's step back. Setback, it's on the ground level where you sit back. And they're interchanging that on page 83 of 93. But if you go to page 82 of 93, under B, it's a 10-foot ground floor setback. I think that's correct. Setback is, setback from on the ground level, you sit back. When you're up on the fifth floor, you want to go back, you step back. So that's why on page 83, I think they need to clarify it a little bit.
Got it.
For some of these.
First paragraph should be setback, and then the second paragraph, under description, 20-foot step back.
I think for some of these that are as prescriptive as that, I mean, there's really no variability. I mean, in theory, assuming that 20 feet is magic. I mean, so we've used photos throughout this document to give us visual images of what could work and what might not work. But for some of these that are like, exact, if they are, you know, they like, for this example, on the previous page in the middle, they used actually a software diagram and dimensioned it, right? And so for this one, Ray, maybe the best thing is to push these photos down and have a similar diagram sketch that shows the bottom level, and then the step back for the upper level. So it's clear to match up with whatever wording we end up with. I agree, we should have some more clarity on the wording, but maybe we could have a diagram to show that as well, because that, I think, would be a clear representation.
Yeah, 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 that's, I agree, I agree. Just that, on page 83, I think there's a mixed up, in my mind, on the wording.
Right, right. I think we can fix that.
I think we keep the setback on the 20 feet, because that matches what we're using for setback. You talk about page.
Okay, I'm going to call wordsmithing, and we're going to fix this.
But the minimum is the big question there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Page 84. 85. Hang in there, we're getting close.
The missing line.
I had a question on appropriate first bullet. It says, secondary entries are permitted along through passage frontages. Is a through passage frontage the same as through block passage?
Excellent question. I'm not, I honestly, I'm not sure exactly. Because when it's through passage, I don't know what frontage is sort of throwing me off there. So I think that's a good point of needing clarification. Thank you.
That is how I read it, but, good question.
Good point.
Well, it's just, it's one of the things that was coming up, is consistent terminology.
Page 86.
So Lucy, what you, so we talked about this one earlier. You read the second bullet point under inappropriate, and threw in a word there that's not there, and that's glass. So when I read that, it says, blue tinted reflective or other opaque materials or treatments. And I look at the picture on top, which I assume is, what they're saying is an appropriate treatment, and I see brass doors, right? And so, you know, for me, that's a, that's kind of a reflective material. But if we're really talking about the glass, I think that could use maybe another word or two to be clear on that perspective. Because I think, you know, there are some architectural treatments at the ground level that are shiny and reflective, and actually can be quite nice. And that's different than saying the windows are transparent, right? So I think that one is.
And I think the glass had come, that topic had come up in staff comments, so that's why I was just reading into it. But I think it's a good clarification.
It's really just the windows.
It's the glass.
The windows.
Well, window includes the frame. And that's what Keith's point is, is that.
Oh, right, right, gotcha.
Glass.
It's glass.
Just glass.
Correct, I agree.
87.
The guideline paragraph, I don't understand that long run-on sentence. I don't actually understand what they're trying to say there. Seems like maybe two sentences to me, but I can't tell.
It makes sense to my planner brain, but we'll work on that.
The way I would read this is, retail uses fronting, is that correct? Retail is the subject, uses is the verb. On public streets, a through-block passage, natural areas.
Uses is a noun.
Uses is a noun.
Retail is an adjective. You're testing my high school English.
So I would, can we recast that sentence so that's clear?
So.
Retail applications or retail?
In real estate, uses is a.
Right, right.
No, for us, this is, except, this would be typical, I'd understand.
Yeah, okay.
That is the word, that's the word, yeah.
So retail activities?
But activity is more like stuff that would go on on a plaza.
I mean, you could say spaces, if you wanted to use a different word than uses. I mean, because then you're talking about the actual space, and not the use. I don't know.
Isn't that English?
Yeah.
I think it's defining the use, it's not industrial. It's not commercial.
Okay.
Residential.
Residential. Retail use.
That's obviously confusing to enough people that we ought to address it. Not here.
Right. I think they have it right.
They will. With any other comments on 87? But 88?
My one comment here is the, they, I think they show the blue line on the picture in the upper right to show that this is what they're talking about, 40% transparent of the ground floor. Me, it's just not a great picture, given, you don't really get to see the ground floor that well. And mostly what you see is this, the sort of barcode pattern of these windows in the building, which I don't think is very attractive.
I was waiting for you to say this background building.
So, I'll be honest, I told them, you guys do not like this picture. I love this building, so I understand why they have not dropped it, because they probably like it too, as designers. But I know this is not a good picture, because it doesn't convey what you guys are wanting, you know, that it's not representative of the things that you like. So.
That, and then in this case, I don't think it's a very good representation.
Right.
Of the ground floor transparency, because it's all dark, right?
Yeah, it's all dark, and it's at an angle, and it's behind cars, yeah.
Right, and does the diagram at the bottom do it sufficiently? I mean, not in terms of being architecturally what we want, in terms of style, but in terms of sort of, or composition, but in terms of meeting the requirement. Illustrating what 40% transparency looks like, that's what I mean.
Right, right, there you go, yeah, yeah.
So even the photo on the next page, which is our weather protection page, the top one, I mean, so you've got big windows, you can actually see through those windows. That's like a better photo, but we can find one.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll keep pushing.
Same page, no inappropriate section there.
Right.
Wonder if they could move the second bullet under appropriate down there? Make it inappropriate reflective coatings.
Yeah.
Page 89.
I would like to just build on our previous discussion on this page. And I go back to some of the other guidelines that we've discussed up till this point. Harmony, compatibility, and then a third one I like to use a lot is integration. So I think there should be some levity in the awnings, but it needs to have harmony, compatibility, and integration within the building and the urban fabric. And I would cite the inappropriate picture again, is that has none of the above. Really just wants to get your attention. And so there, I think it's inappropriate. So there's still this subjective element to it, but if somebody is doing, you know, designing a refined building, you would think they would pay very special attention to that awning as well. And that's where I think integration comes into play. And if we use that word, I think it forces the hand a little bit to get the desired effect without hemming them in as much. I guess I'm talking mostly to you.
Well, but I think you're also, that one of the important points that you're bringing up, Kevin, is the point that even if you did have a sombrero business, I would say that your awning should be appropriate to the architecture of the building.
Exactly.
And I think you're using the word integration. I think another concept is that it's consistent with the architectural character of the building.
Sure.
So, but I think that you're also, to Ray's point, we're not asking that it not, you know, it could be the jewelry on the building, I'm going for girl imagery this time, but it needs to, it needs to complement it.
Yeah, I would use, as an example, if we're using the arts and crafts style, and we have this very severe roofline coming down to the street level, and that severe roofline could keep going, you know, and you just, you just situate your building such that that where that roofline terminates, it does span out four or five feet, and serve as that awning, is one example. And then it becomes part and parcel of the architecture, as opposed to this thing that's attached to the building by a third party. And I think that's when the awning is successful, and I think the top image illustrates that. It's very much a part of that storefront window facade. The materiality is similar, it registers off the window lines. And so that's what I mean by, and that's where I think it becomes appropriate.
I really like that idea that integrating or complementary to the building stuff, because that would give us the tool, when we look at an awning, to be able to say, no, we do like this, or we don't like that. And we can use that language, I think.
Exactly.
Without having to say, it can only be horizontal metal or canvas. I mean, that, if there's a material that Carl's talked about, that's synthetic, that may be good. I hate to say, no, we're never going to have it.
Yeah.
Just a question on this page, would this be appropriate for this or not? Because maybe a developer would never be faced with it. Should we have any words regarding weather protection for transit stops? Even for light transit like jetties or whatever might be appropriate in here?
A good question here, from a building owner's perspective. So a transit stop is a separate, I'm not sure that would be covered under this. But from a building owner's perspective, you don't want somebody to say, okay, you have to design a transit waiting area in front of your building, you know, and require that of somebody to do. Because it's essentially a taking of your property then, right?
Not, and if it's in the right of way. But Richard, is your, is your point that that transit stop should, shall, some verb, have, be weather protected? Or are you suggesting that that provision is incorporated into the adjacent building?
I guess my thought is that if there are transit stops, they should be comfortable, obviously, functional. But I'm not sure whether the developer would be required to provide those, or whether they would be public, and therefore not appropriate to this guide.
Probably would, might come handy in that where the transit authority would be in corp, in partnership with an owner developing, developer coming in, putting in a building with a transit stop in front of it, or maybe even inside the building, or have to be.
It's remarkably difficult, I'll say. We went through this with Atlas, they negotiated upfront with Metro. They redesigned a location, and then Metro wasn't sure they wanted to use it. So I think, and, you know, it's kind of like some of the challenges that we face with school bus stops. You know, it's one place, one year, it's a different place another year, because of where the children are, the timing, how many buses they're running. I, it is a huge value of ours. So I think that what you're saying is correct. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that putting it in here, I mean, this is more about the building design, and I think that we want them, I'm just not quite sure how we can predict where they're going to be enough to set that up in front.
That may have been behind my question, yeah. I don't know that it's really appropriate for this guide, but obviously, it's something we're trying to encourage in the core, right?
Absolutely.
Well, and just one overall statement about this guide, and I want you guys to, I think, hopefully embrace this perspective, is, you know, we're going to get this done, it's going to get adopted, we're going to start using it, and we're going to immediately start to realize the things that we forgot to add. All right, and so part of this is recognizing that this thing needs to be semi-fluid, and we need to have the diligence to keep updating it as we go through permits, have realizations, and go, wait, that didn't turn out exactly what we wanted, or we got into a debate about something we shouldn't have, because we were all clear on how it should have been, but the developer had no idea, right? So part of this is, just take that with a grain of salt, Richard, because we may be revisiting that particular issue maybe sometime in the near future.
Won't our answer be that's something that planning policy missed?
That will absolutely be your answer. We will be Switzerland on this issue.
Comments from the PBC chair.
Thank you, Mel.
How about page 90?
No inappropriate there.
How about page 91?
Are you still on the PBC?
On 91, I definitely have a question, two questions about the first appropriate accessible parks within three blocks of all residents. So in terms of building design, do you say, well, you're building a building, and there's no park within three blocks, so you have to put the park in yours, or it seems a hard thing to figure out how you do that? And then again, back to my question of, you want to have parks every three blocks, because then you have to maintain them and stuff, so I'm not so sure that. I like the idea of the green necklace and connected parts and planned out, but I'm not sure that it can be this prescriptive, or even how it would work.
Well, and I don't know that there means they're public parks. But I think it is, I think understanding the intent, the spacing, the size. You know, if you have a small piece of property, and you're the first one to build, and there's no park in that area, does that mean it's on you? You know, I, and it obviously ties back to the Parks Plan. And so we are going to meet next week and begin to talk to the Parks Department, because they're trying to start anticipating some of the needs for Central Squaw. We're trying to understand how these pages fit in, and begin to try and set that framework.
So, and just to Mel's point, because I guess what I would say is, you know, there's, if you're, if you, if you go with like a demand-based approach, there's a big difference between, you know, three blocks of three-story buildings, or three blocks of eight-story buildings in terms of the number of people that you're generating in a particular block that would need an open space to go recreate in, right? And so part of it for me is that that piece is missing. There was an assumption maybe made on density, that I don't know how to deal with that right yet, just because, again, we don't have, there's not a pattern that's been established yet, right? So I don't, I find myself also, and I think Lucy and I were both looking to the Parks Department to give us some clarity on this particular topic, since it's their wheel. wheelhouse.
How about page 92? Of 93.
Got some comments on 93.
It looks a lot like the other page that was what-
First of all, it's not blank.
Right? I'm getting the sense that we're, we've completed that. Any other comments for people, that people would like to make, feel compelled to make?
Well, I, I think one of the things to talk about, not tonight, but strategically, we have this meeting next week, and how do we want to use that? We've gone through sort of, you know, both documents, we've looked in depth. I'm not sure whether there are big topics that are left for you. The one topic that's, a, a few of us have communicated about is whether we want to look at some images or, you know, talk about local projects that we think are good examples, or, and I don't know that we're saying that they have to be in there, but we'd like to put these out to the Arch, to Crandall or Rambla, that we would like them to consider these as, for inclusion, or whether we're looking at a little bigger pool. I mean, I, I know there's been a lot of, and Crandall or Rambla has, frankly, when we said that to them, they said, "We prefer to have local projects." I said, you know, "Because it's nice for both the community, for the staff, for the builders, to be able to go out and see a project and not just look at it in a little, you know, two-inch by two-inch photo, but see what it feels like in three dimensions."
So there's, I mean, so, so clearly, we could spend easily two hours looking at pictures and, and going through, you know, that. And I think another suggestion that Connie made, but it was also, I think she stole it from one of our council members, kidding, because it was made last night as well, was at some point, and I don't know if it makes, if we're ready to do this, is run you guys through a dry run and take either Vale or Inniswood or Atlas, or one of the projects that you might have done without this. Do a new one, use this, and then talk through how we saw it working. You know, fill out the checklists, go through that, and then see if, if you and we are generally on the same page. If we can't agree, then that's gonna be very telling that maybe some of this needs, because I don't know how much of this is gonna get updated before the next meeting, right?
None of it.
Yeah, and so the question is, is what's a good useful next step?
Right. Absolutely.
At some point, that's a great idea to do that.
Yeah. My bias is to try the tool on, see how it works. And I think we could spend more than two hours looking at pictures, and, and we will all have a different idea of what it looks like, but I think there's a general consensus of, we'd like to see more Isqwa stuff or local stuff than not. And preferably, we'd like to see more appropriate Isqwa pictures than inappropriate, but we'll have to see if that works out.
No, I agree.
But I think using the tool right now and seeing if, seeing if we could come to some kind of resolution or agreement on how, how we, and Atlas would be a great one to, to look at, or anyway, pick a project that had, generate a little controversy and then see how, how this could have helped or not. That would be great use of our time, I think.
I, I agree. I think that would be great, and we could work to do that next week. The one, so, the, I would like to not do Atlas, because it's three buildings, and I would rather do either Vale or Inniswood, because it's a smaller site in one building. The one thing to keep in mind is, none of them are gonna fit the Isqwa style, unless we say it's Western false front or grange. And so, um-
But isn't that part of the outcome, right?
Sure. Yes, but it's a little bit more challenging, because we've got that, that, that's like a whole batch of it.
But for example-
This is good.
We went through a project review on one of the projects the other day, and the applicant had chose Urban Grange. And so our consultant said, you know, "That's a challenge in this location, because we chose arts and crafts." And, and he went through why they chose arts and crafts to review it against, and the applicant chose why they chose Urban Grange, and it was a, it was a fascinating conversation to watch that unfold. So part of like, if we choose Inniswood or Vale, we're gonna have to assume which one of these architectural styles it should fit in, because the, the consultant has created some general parameters. If it's a particular height, you know, it can only be a certain thing, or, you know, for Urban Grange, you know, his comment was, the, the applicant's building was pretty square, it was like a cube, and Urban Grange is much more kind of barn-like and agriculture, and how do you deal with that scale issue? So if you really want to do Urban Grange, how do you do, deal with the fact that the building doesn't mimic the Urban Grange form? You know, just because you want to use metal siding doesn't make it Urban Grange, right? And so it was a great conversation, and I think we learned a lot for how it would work. So similarly, I think if we choose Vale or Inniswood, and I would agree with Lucy, Atlas is too complicated to do in a week. But, you know, so we'll, we'll pick which one of those architects, architecture themes seems to make sense for that, and then we'll judge it against that. And you guys might say, "Hey, look, you guys picked arts and crafts. We don't see that building as arts and crafts at all. We would have chosen this style." And then that's a great conversation point, right?
I think that sounds fabulous. We will not be providing the checklist at Atlas.
Well, and I, I guess my preference might be Vale, just in terms of Inniswood had all the hillside stuff that sort of impacted, and we don't have that many hillside sites.
Yeah, we might get, we might go down the hillside rabbit hole and, and spend a lot of time there, when that might not be very informative for most of the properties.
But I will tell you that both of those properties have a natural area, so both, it would be that, that sort of natural area, because it has a stream on, in, in proximity, and they're saying anything within 150 feet of that natural area would have this application. So it would apply to Vale-
Vale as well.
But you wouldn't have the full hillside thing to deal with. Sure. Okay, so let's, we'll do Vale, we'll have it filled out, and we'll talk our way through it-
Excellent.
-with Gusto.
So, other comments?
Just the only other one, Connie had brought up the idea of view protection. I think view protection is mostly covered in SIDS, if I recollect.
She would say no. So, um, the other thing I would like to do is I started making a list, and I think Connie sort of did too, and that was something you had seen, I think some of you had seen. I'd just like to have a list of buildings that, that if, if there are certain buildings that we like, I don't, I don't want it to be my list of good buildings. So what I'd like to do is just start a list and email it around, and then we can look at it next, next meeting. That way, if the public wants to add something to it, it, we're not excluding the public conversation, but we're building a list.
Does the list have imagery? Because I think sometimes, I know it helps me. Do you want, send you photos, I guess, or is that too much, or just a list, and then we, we look at a map, maybe? I don't know.
I, I'm, I, we'll see what we can do.
Yeah. Yeah, I hear you.
So, um, but, you know, your point is, so I think at the very least, what we have to do is send an address or something, so that you can get to Google Street View and look at it.
Maybe that's the best way.
Because I, I think if I start dropping, first of all, I don't have photos of all of them. If I'm doing screen clips, then I get to a PDF, then no one else can modify the document when I send it out to you. But I don't expect you, the, the name I may call something may not be the name you call that building, and that's not gonna be very helpful if we can't all look at it.
Address, address in Google Map would be great.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
The onus is on us.
Do you know that those, those townhomes just south of Dix, I think, exporting goods would be a good example, because it's got the plat-
Yep.
Through-block passage, it's got-
Yep.
-street-level residential and everything, so.
I'll add it to it.
So great. I'd like to thank all the participation, they were great comments. Richard, I, apparently you have a lot of editorial kind of things. I don't know if you've written those down, and you might want to pass those on.
I have them. I guess the appropriate times when we're up to the final draft or so on, and then I can pass them on.
I need, I need them before the final draft.
Okay, can you get me the file, please?
Right, you and I were talking about how to do that.
Okay, great.
Very great.
Thanks, Connie, for your participation as well. So it, let's, during the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.